We'd like to call this July meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners to order. If you do have electronic devices that spontaneously make noise, if you would silence them at this time, we'd appreciate it. In a moment, we'll be inviting Mr. Liam Hardison from North Spray Christian Church in Eden, disciples of Christ, I believe, to offer our invocation. That will be followed by a pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Berger to lead our pledge of allegiance tonight, if it would. So if you would all rise at this time, and we'll ask Mr. Hardison to come forward.
Father God, we've come here at the close of another day to thank you for your love, your blessings, your goodness. We thank you for our country, we thank you for this county that we're a part of. We realize that things are not well in the world today, so we've come here tonight to meet together, and we just pray, Lord, for the leading of your Spirit in the business that's conducted and all that's done and said. And then when we leave this place and each of us go out to serve you, we pray a special blessing, your angels of protection be upon us, especially upon our Sheriff's Department, as they go out to make this community a safe place. Directors, we pray for your wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everyone, would you face the flag?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And Reverend Hardison, thank you so much for sharing that invocation with us. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for a period of time, more than 10 days, as required, and upon perusing it, do we have a motion to approve or amend?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to amend the agenda. Under 7A, I'd like to add presentation by North Carolina Insurance Commissioner Mike Causey. Under 10, I'd like to remove item number B from the agenda. And under 11, under new business, item A would be allocation of the CARES Act funding over Ms. Pat Galloway.
Okay. As amended, do we have a second?
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
It has been seconded. Further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Now we have one of our pleasures here, and we're going to do it a little bit different. Usually, we get all the commissioners down here, Judge, but you get the short straw. You're only going to get me, and I'm going to come down and share something with you. And this is in the interest of health, so don't feel slighted. So hang with me.
When you volunteer, volunteer, keep it up.
Judge. Why you say Judge?
That's okay, Judge, I'm used to not leaving this to you.
Fed and I volunteered for Meals on Wheels.
Judge, let me present this first. And let me make some comments, but I've known Judge Pierce for quite some time and members of his family. There are quite a number of Pierces in Rockingham County that have made admirable contributions, but we want to recognize for my and Mr. Judge Pierce as our outstanding volunteerism of and for your dedication to the community and as the citizens of this county, and that's enacted tonight by your commissioners. And in addition to that, we have a pen for you that reminds you that you're in a good place. So now, we would like to hear your comments. Congratulations.
When you volunteer, keep it up. Fed and I volunteered for Meals on Wheels. Fed and I volunteered for Meals on Wheels. We helped with the RCC Foundation this year. I am a member of Salvation Army Board. Do you remember Hubert Safran and John Love? Hubert thought I was a good volunteer, so he volunteered me for the YMCA. And I was, we were the Y Board of, Mike Ferguson and I are the only ones still with us today. We have both served as Deacons in the First Baptist Church. I served as chairman of the Deacon Board. We both, along with daughters Catherine, we have, we passed out Meals on Wheels at the Soup Kitchen on the Fourth of July. I was on the Social Services Board a long time ago. We hired Larry Johnson, and that's been a while. I want to thank my niece, Tara, an employee of Rockingham County. She is the Director of Youth Services. I'll thank all of you for this award, and that's all I have to say.
We're usually a little closer, but I'm going to lean on my partner there, Mr. Reese Perdle, because one of the places that I've seen Judge Pierce's wisdom exhibit many times is on our Health and Human Services Board. I don't know how many years you've served on that, but a lot more than Mr. Perdle and I have, and I think--
Combined.
Anyhow.
Hey, Judge, just on behalf of the board and me personally, I just want to thank you for all you've done for the people of Rockingham County. You've spent a better part of your life giving back to the people of Rockingham County, and you made this a better place to live, work, and play. So whether it's the Salvation Army or the Health and Human Services Board, or you mentioned Meals on Wheels, you've always been one of those that stepped up to the plate and been there for the people. So thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
If you didn't hear all of it, we will fix you up there electronically. Thanks again, Judge Pierce.
Thank you.
Your own, Sheriff Page. Good evening to the county commissioners. I appreciate you, all of you, for giving the opportunity to recognize one of our employees, a wonderful employee, who has served Rockingham County for 30 years. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Lieutenant Maggie Barker. Maggie, you want to come up?
This way.
Maggie, would anybody from your family like to have come stand with you? Socialists, of course.
Don't need it if you've got a mask on.
Okay. Turn our staff, turn our staff, and come on up. It's a tradition with the sheriff's office, and we have one of our members retired, as we present them with a few things, but I've got to say some words before I present, because them people forget. So I want to say this. Maggie, I've had the opportunity to work with you for 30 years. I remember when you came to work at this Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. I remember when you retired, and we're never going to forget you. I want you to remember that, your family. The other thing I was going to say is Maggie, to the commissioners, she has worked in every capacity, and when I was off, she was helping me. So when I take her day off, she helps me a lot. But she's always been someone I can go to and ask. But like I said, from the jail, to records, to DARE, to the courts, to-- Carrying concealed permits and firearms. Run that records division. You've done it all, and we just want to tell you, we appreciate you, we love you, we're going to miss you. But when I present her with her credentials, she's a retired lieutenant, but that means she can come back, okay? So you can come back and help anytime. I want to get that out real clear. So this time, what I'd like to do is present you with a, first of all, let me read the certificate. And the certificate says, "Certificate of Appreciation of Rockingham County Sheriff's Office is awarded to Margaret Maggie Barker for 30 years of distinguished service for the citizens of Rockingham County, North Carolina, Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. Signed, Sheriff Sam Page. This date, July 13, 2020." And I'd like to give this to you. Will you pass it over to me? Because you're going to have your hands full. Maggie, this is also a plaque that says, "Presented to Margaret Maggie Barker. Thank you for your years of dedicated service as citizens of Rockingham County, Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. December 3, 1990, June 30, 2020." And Maggie reminded me, it was 30 years, two months. We done good. Okay. Maggie, this is from your officer. Thank you. Thank you. Maggie, it's also a tradition to present you with your firearm, so I'm going to present you with your firearm. It's your duty weapon. And also, we have your credentials, along with your lieutenant's badge. I'm going to present this to you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give her a hand for her service in Rockingham County. Maggie, I don't want to put you in a spot. I don't want to put you in a spot. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just, I would like--
Come, please, right there.
I just like the opportunity to say thank you to county commissioners and to everybody else that has supported me, my family has been a big support into my law enforcement family. I love y'all, and I appreciate everything you guys ever did. I remember there was a time that I was walking out that door, and I had a sergeant, I hate to say his name, but Sheriff Page said, "Where you going?" And I said, "I'm quitting. I'm done." So he said, "Hang in there, things will get better," and I did. And thank God he gave me that little talk and all the support I have from my family. And, you know, I really am going to miss my law enforcement friends and my government staff. I love y'all, and thank you for all your support.
Maggie, can we get a picture real quick?
Do we have that?
Yes.
Can I take a round?
Yeah.
Please.
Everybody look that way? Everybody ready?
I ain't saying anything.
Okay. This is all. It's just-- Good morning. You ready? Maggie, thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Well, Lieutenant Barker, we wish you all the best, and it's kind of awkward doing these things nowadays, but that doesn't mean that we don't appreciate you a whole bunch.
Come back. Come back and work.
We're now on to item six, would be on to item six, but no, we are on item six. Gentlemen, you've had the consent agenda, also, as long as the rest of the agenda. For those of you that are not familiar, the consent agenda is non-controversial, routine sort of items. If you do have specific questions concerning them, please contact our county manager, Mr. Lance Metzler. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve or amend the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Craig Travis.
Seconded.
And seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. It is approved. We only have one person signed up tonight for-- What?
Public comment.
Okay. I only have one person signed up for public comment. Don't have a last name, but the first name's Mike. And as you come up, I'll ask our county manager to read the public comment criteria.
The public comment period should be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Each individual shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The clock will start with three minutes unless yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you already yielded time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairman know in advance. Speakers appearing for the Board of Commissioners will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office.
Sure. Thank you. Mike, your own.
All right, thanks. So you can call me Mike, I live here. The topic I want to discuss is disability rights, equal access. On the 21st of February this year, my wife and I were attacked in Madison, and subsequently I was, my freedom was stolen from me, and I was tossed into one of the buildings in Rockingham County. The magistrate there refused accommodations, disability rights, and subsequently, the jailers did the same. They stripped me of all assistive technology I have and anything I have to shield me from lights, which trigger migraines and a lot of times render me unable to move or talk. In that process, the nurse went in and one of the jailers refused to allow me to scribble because all I could do is move my hand and wrist, and so they then said that that was a refusal of care. They stripped me naked, left, they told me I was on suicide watch, and they left me in this isolated room for many hours. And so I was undergoing torture at the hands of Rockingham County staff. I brought this to the attention of somebody at the county, I believe at the county manager's office, along with another disability advocate. And as far as we know, Lance and his staff dismissed that, they haven't done anything to process that disability complaint. So we have filed it with the DOJ, so I'm sure you guys can expect to hear from them. They're kind of slow on responding, but we try to handle things at the lowest level. I didn't know if you guys are aware of the situation, that that's the kind of treatment that happens in the jail, or maybe it's specific to me. Also, subsequent to that, I went to a court date to try to resolve the issue. The DA's office refused to allow me to get access to the courts, so that's another disability access issue. They said specifically because I use assistive technology, just like a hearing impaired person uses a hearing aid, I'm a visually impaired person, I use vision aids. And they said that was the specific reason they wouldn't allow me access to the courts. Is that one minute left?
Yes.
The DA even went as far as to ask the judge to arrest me for failure to appear when his staff were the ones preventing me to have access to the courts. So that's what's happening in Rockingham County as far as disability access goes, and that's just a couple encounters I've had. I haven't done much in Rockingham County to find out how compliant the county is with disability rights and disability access, but you can expect me to be doing more to try to help you guys be in compliance with federal law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our added item tonight is that we'd like to welcome Commissioner Mike Causey, and thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedule. I haven't seen you since the campaigns, and we hope things are going well for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to be back in Rockingham County. I was in Raleigh this morning, so it was real good to be in Rockingham County this afternoon. We've been visiting fire departments this afternoon, doing some check presentations, and thanks to our Fire Marshal, Jeremy, and we've got, you all know, your native Wayne Delancy that now works for us at the Office of State Fire Marshal. He started here in his fire career at Monroton Fire Department. And then we have Mr. Cates, Emergency Management Director, he's been with us all day, so we've had some good company. I just want to say it's an honor and privilege for me to serve as your Insurance Commissioner and State Fire Marshal, and when I got elected, I made it a point to get out of Raleigh as much as I could and visit the counties. And I just want to let you know, and some of you already know this, that I did make official visits in all 100 counties in well under two years, and this is our multiple time that we've been to Rockingham County. And I want to put in a plug for a program. I just sent a letter today to our state legislators. Our office administers the matching grant program that goes to our fire departments, and this year, we gave out over eight and a half million dollars to fire departments. And I believe, if I was told right, we've given out 10 matching grants in Rockingham County totaling, was it $205,000? So that is a tremendous help to your fire departments. The ones presented today, one with the maximum's $30,000. So for those of you that might not be familiar with the matching grant program, if you qualify for $30,000, you've got to raise 30,000. There are a few exceptions on a really small department. Some of those can get a little better than a 50-50. But any, I want to put in a plea to you all when you're talking with your state legislators and legislative leadership to emphasize the importance of this matching grant program to your fire departments and what it means to Rockingham County. And I could tell you that every fire department in Rockingham County that our office has inspected for the safety inspections, for the Office of State Fire Marshal, every one of them have received an upgraded fire safety rating. And what does that mean? It means generally that the people that live in that fire district will most likely get a lower homeowner's insurance rate, so it's a big deal for the people that live in those fire districts. I also want to thank Sheriff Page for coming out to meet with us today. I know he has a busy schedule. And the, lastly, I just want to mention that we do a lot of work in our office. We have sworn law enforcement officers, and when I took office, the first place I went to visit was our Criminal Investigations Division to find out how bad is insurance fraud. And it was worse than I thought. They were, we get an average of 20 criminal complaints a day coming into the department. We were well, only able to investigate fully 12% of those over 5,000 criminal complaints a year. So I went to the legislature and pleaded my case that we needed to hire additional law enforcement. And so when I took office, we had 20 sworn law enforcement officers to cover the whole state, 100 counties. It wasn't happening. Today, we have 45 sworn law enforcement officers, and every week, these officers are out there, they have arrest powers in all 100 counties. They're actually functioning as state police. We do arson investigations and insurance fraud investigations, and we have doubled the number of arrests, prosecutions, convictions over the past couple of years. But tomorrow, we have CBS from New York coming to North Carolina. They do a show, some of you may have seen, called 48 Hours. We actually have a murder case that we're working on in Gaston County. And one other thing I did when I took office is I hired additional attorneys that had been prosecutors, and we set up a legal prosecution team that could actually go into court. And so in this case in Gaston County that was an insurance fraud case, turned out to be a murder case. You can look it up on the internet, it's called the Eyedrop Murder Case. The District Attorney, Lock Bell, in Gaston County, asked our attorneys to prosecute this case in court, so the CBS program's coming in to do a story. We can't talk about the details because it hadn't come up yet. But I just want you all to be aware of how much insurance fraud affects what we pay for insurance, because we're all paying for it. And it's close to 20 cents on the dollar of what we pay for insurance premiums is going to pay for insurance fraud. So thank you for listening to me. Thank you for what you do for Rockingham County and the state of North Carolina. And I tell people, I don't know if you have any insurance problems, but if you ever do, give us a call, because we are here to help, and we helped over 250,000 people in North Carolina last year get insurance claims resolved and get fair settlements and that sort of thing. So thank you for having me. It was a pleasure being in Rockingham County today, and if anything I can ever do to help you all, please let me know. Thank you so much.
Hang with us just a second. I'll try to talk loud enough to be heard. My son-in-law is a plaintiff attorney, and all of he does is Medicare fraud. But we'd like to present you with one of our pens to go along with your North Carolina flag, and we hope you'll take a look at that. It says you're in a good place, and if it's a good place, you ought to want to come back.
Thank you, I will. I'll put it on right here.
Thank you, sir.
Very much. Goodbye.
Hold that pen up for me, Sheriff.
She likes taking pictures of her. Thank you all.
We're going to move on to item eight, and we'll have a public hearing momentarily. Lee Cochran, our Director of Economic Development, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, guys. It's great to see you all again. It's been a month, I can't believe it. But tonight's public hearing, the purpose of this is to consider the approval of an appropriation from the General Fund in an amount not to exceed $2,210,867, which will be distributed to ONTEX. This is the announcement that we made a couple of weeks ago. That's going in the South Rockingham Corporate Business Park, following their project parameters, which is 403 new jobs and a $93.5 million capital investment.
Okay, I believe that explanation is adequate. I hereby open the public hearing. Is anyone here that wishes to comment before, against, or have questions regarding this Hearing done. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and we need a vote for action. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Perdle and seconded by Commissioner Travis. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. We're going to move-- We're going to move on to item nine. This has to do with a subordination agreement between Rockingham County, the United States Department of Agriculture, and HELP. Is there somebody here to talk from HELP?
I guess it's going to be John.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to elaborate further. This is for Rockingham County to consider, for the board to consider, subordinating the reversionary clause, which is contained in the deed granting property from county.
I'm going to interrupt. Yes. Tell the world what subordination means.
Yes, meaning that the county would subordinate an interest in a deed. The reversionary clause meaning that if the way the deed does read, in the event that HELP would cease to exist or operate as HELP, it would automatically revert back to the county in order for them to obtain the requisite financing to build from USDA. USDA has respectfully requested that we would take a backseat, so to speak, and allow that subordination to occur. So in essence, HELP can receive financing.
The explanation there, to make it more clear, this is in essence a loan that HELP Incorporated is going to receive, and we're doing the necessaries to make that happen. And the end result is they will have a much improved facility, which will be built over on Cherokee Camp Road.
On land that we donated to.
The county has provided the land.
Yes, sir.
I don't know exactly when it starts, but this is the initial funding. So this is a big step forward for HELP Incorporated. They do lots of good work in this county, and we're happy to hear this. This requires no action, so I'm going to move on to item 10 and ask Ronnie Tate.
We do need action. We do? We do need the board vote on this.
Vote on agreement.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. Moved by Commissioner Pertle and seconded by Commissioner Hall. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. It's passed.
I've got three items tonight for your consideration. And the first one is approval of an MOU between the county and the towns of Madison and Mayodan to increase our water and wastewater capacity. I provided the MOU with your packet. What this agreement does is increases the county's water and wastewater capacity from 200,000 gallons per day to 700,000 gallons per day. And it takes the effort of both Madison and Mayodan to help the county to achieve that. I'll be glad to answer any questions. And also, Bill Lester's in the audience. If you have any specific technical questions about that.
This is not a technical question, but for public information, we've been doing with 100,000 for quite some length of time. When do you think we're going to have to increase the dispersal of more water?
I think maybe if Colley Brook comes online, the full build-out of Colley Brook, some of it may be dependent on some EDC things that Lee has in the pipeline if those come to fruition. But as of right now, we have capacity under the 200,000 gallon per day limit right now.
Okay. Commissioners, further questions? Would entertain a motion of approval for this MOU? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Hall. Seconded by Commissioner Pertle. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Item B.
Okay, the second item is approval of the lease of the space that we refer to as Community Kitchen and some of the areas around the Scout Lodge and the Boy Scout Lodge and the Amphitheater on Cherokee Camp Road. Snapped in RFP back earlier in June. We got one response back from the company Blissful Pallet Events and Catering LLC. Their proposal is to lease the space for $100 per month and to provide the maintenance, the utilities, the necessary inspections to operate that space and to have a way online for people to lease that space out if they want to, if Blissful Pallet is not using it. I propose for lease to be for five years, starting August 1st, June 31st of 2025, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about that as well.
Gentlemen, inquiries?
Glad to start. How much acreage did you carve out to be leased with the kitchen?
Commissioner Pertle, I did not calculate that, so I do not know.
But that was listed in the RFP?
Yes, sir.
I guess you described it in the RFP.
Well, we, as part of the RFP, there was an attached map. I think that's the one the questions came back about, the wording in pink and in blue. But that map was attached for the people to reference.
Okay. And did your RFP specifically identify the terms of the lease as far as the five-year period? Or was that a request by the?
I can answer that.
Okay.
He sent out the RFP, and it said up to in the RFP.
Up to five years?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure where that number came from, but that's what was in the RFP.
All right, there's my next question. Thank you. Where did the five years come from?
I think a thought was that was if we offer somebody a lease up to five years, if they're going to put money into it, make improvements to that facility, try to get a business up and going, those types of things, the longer the lease, the better it would be for that company.
If we can do without it for five years, why don't we sell it?
That's up to the board. That's certainly up to you all, if that's your preference.
Okay. And what did our insurance carrier say about these events?
I have not spoken to Chris about that. The people leasing it provide insurance for?
Well, for events up to whatever those limits are.
Yeah.
But what did our insurance carrier say? I mean, I'm not sure what limitations we've got on time of events or even alcohol consumption during 3:00 in the afternoon on a Wednesday while our employees are here? Or what did the insurance carrier say about any of that?
I did not consult with Chris on that or ask the insurance. I can if the board would like.
All right, yeah.
But you and I did talk about the hours of operation. Anytime during the working hours of the county, whoever gets that property has to consult with us prior to having an event.
Yes, that is correct.
And that's every event?
Every event, if it's Monday through Friday or when we're working.
During business hours.
To make sure that that doesn't conflict with our staff, both ingress and egress from the governmental center.
Commissioner Travis, I have a question, but since you're on this, I'm particularly interested in liability of tenant versus landlord.
That was my question. That was my question, Ronnie. If they're holding an event on county property, their insurance is going to cover any damage or injuries on that property when it happens during their event, right?
We ask with these agreements for general liability, workers' comp, and I think property damage insurance. And it's the standard that we have with any agreement for these types of leases or contracts. Maybe John can answer that a little more.
Yes, what I see here in the proposed lease agreement that's in the board packet, that this at all times that the lesssee would at its own expense maintain and keep enforced during the term of the agreement insurance, that's acceptable to the county.
Has the applicant said anything about buying the property?
No, I haven't approached anybody about buying the property.
Well, if I could rent it for $1,200 a year, I would be inclined to do that rather than buy it.
And I think the applicant is here, too. If you guys have any questions to ask him.
Personally, I've got a problem with that long of a lease. I'd go for 12 months, max. Beyond that, I'd say carve it out and sell it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Travis?
Ronnie, when we started leasing this Community Kitchen out years ago, the goal was to help small businesses get established and get up and running. It was a way for the county to help entrepreneurs.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Then we had a lease agreement that kind of went haywire on us, and it made the county back up because it did not work out good.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So I kind of agree with Commissioner Burger here. You know, the whole point of this Community Kitchen is to help entrepreneurs start out and get their business established, and that shouldn't take five years. I don't know how long this business has been in business, but you know, it sounds like me, if they're starting out, they don't need five-year lease to get established and know if their facility or if their business is going to make it. And if we do five years, what's going to happen next, Ronnie? We're going to have John Smo down there saying, hey, you got office space down there at Old Courthouse, why can't I use that for 1,200 a year? So you're starting a precedent that we ain't going to be able to back out of, because if you do it for one, you got to do it for others. That's the only problem I have. And I agree with Commissioner Burger. I'm good with two years. Now, I asked that question, and I was told that the person that's leasing was willing to change out the HVAC unit. And I think I read somewhere where it said $40,000. And I'm sitting there thinking to myself, what kind of HVAC system do they have down there that costs $40,000?
Well, currently, the building has no HVAC in it. It's not operational.
So it's not going to cost $40,000 to put an air conditioner system in or heating system? I just did it in my house for $6,000. So where are we getting these numbers from?
I do not know where the $40,000 came from, to be honest with you. And we have not priced replacing those units, to my knowledge, in quite a while because nobody's been in the building, and there's been no need to replace them.
Which I agree, Ronnie. We got to make a decision, either the property's going to be used or we need to tear it down or sell it. So we need to decide what we're going to do.
Okay, as far as that, it does not matter to us how long you want to rent it for. I put it in as a starting point if the board decides they want less. I have no issue with it at all. The people wanting to rent it may not want that, but I mean, that's the board decision. I just put it in as a starting point.
I understand it has a renewal for additional five years at the same rate. Well, I don't know if this is pertinent, but my partners and I have a similar sort of a five-year incremental agreement with Subway on one of our properties, and there's a built-in increase at the five-year point. So why was that not, is that not a consideration here?
I'll say this, the building has no heating and air. We're not sure if the hot water works. There's a good portion of it right now as it stands is unusable because of just the shape that it's in. Basically, the kitchen is the only part that is functioning and can be functioning. My thought with it is if we could get somebody in there that would take over the maintenance, the inspections, and pay some rent, it's better than what we have now. Currently, we pay $2,400 a year in utilities, another $200 or $300 to get the hood inspected, plus we have to mow down there and maintain that area. If you get somebody in there, they take care of that for you. That's part of the lease agreement. That was my thought process with the lease. We had somebody that did respond back to the RFP. We put it out to all the local vendors per our purchasing agent's vendor list. This was the only response we got back.
I certainly understand the line of thinking to get something going. I guess my issue is the length of time. And if we can do without it for that long, then certainly selling it outright solves the problem that you're talking about. So I mean, that's really my issue is tying it up for five years if we're going to hang on to it at all at such a cheap rate, because there's so much. There is a return that the investor should get in upfitting a place, but certainly any place you rent is going to require you to upfit it. And that outfit's going to be, I mean, they're going to provide the walls and the ceiling, and then you're going to have to do the rest of the outfit on a lot of commercial leases, especially for restaurants.
Mr. Pertle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I see Mr. Nightcamp is here tonight, if there's any questions. But my only concern is he, you put out a RFP, and he responded to it in good faith, and here's where we are. My only concern is the length of the lease, because the fact of the matter is, you know, he is assuming a risk when he goes down to that facility, because although it is, he's getting a good deal as far as the facility itself and the grounds and parking and all that good stuff, there's also, there's a chance that we may need that property, maybe not so much the building, but the property from which it sits within a five-year period or 10-year period. I don't know, we may not. So he may sign that lease, go down there and sign a 12-month lease or, you know, 24-month lease. He may be able to stay down there for 10 years. But I think that in doing our, in good faith, he also needs to realize we may need that facility because one of our existing buildings is not functional in its current use, and we need to start long-term planning to use that land to keep our campus, keep all of our facilities on this campus. And we may end up using that property just like we did for the animal shelter or something in the future down the road. So I have no problem, as long as he understands, or whoever leases, the leasur understands, that with that great deal that you're getting on the facility, there's also a certain risk that you take that you may not be there that long because the county might need it in a short period of time. So with that, Mr. Chairman, my only concern is the length of the lease and understanding that there is an out for the county should we have that need down the road. We may not. But if we do, I think there should be some pathway to us getting that property back.
And I increased it, too. I mean, that's something that's found.
We need to ask Mr. Nightcamp. I'm sure he's looked at how long it's going to take to amortize this, or he wouldn't have made the offer.
Quick question for Ronnie.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing this. So the reasoning behind a five-year term is with me tonight, I have some investors with me, as well as my financial analyst, when you put your P and L sheets out there with the shape that the building is in, and the county's own HVAC, if we could call it, is the one that said $35,000 to $40,000 to completely gut and reassemble.
All included.
If you put it back to liking kind. But with those numbers being there, the five-year term came from our P and L statements to where, you know, I've got a successful catering company. There's no question there. We're wanting to make more event space to bring in more folks from out of the county. We can increase tax revenue by, you know, has anybody paid for weddings recently? Do you know what they cost? You know, you're looking at $5,000 a Saturday, okay? So we're looking at tax revenue breaking in. We could definitely entertain a three-year term on a lease. Two years, it wouldn't, I just don't see it being advantageous for either one of us. Certainly, it'd be advantageous for you, so I guess that would be wrong. But the other thing is, like I said, we're having But the other thing is, is like I said, we're having to go in initially and dump all this money upfront. And so, it's a little bit of security for us to know that when we put all, this is the financial, but the sweat equity into it. Has anybody been in there and toured that property recently? It's more sweat equity than it is financial. That in 24 months, you're not gonna say, oh, sorry, we got it. Now, in reviewing the lease, I do know the lease states that in an emergency situation with 48 hours notice, you guys have full rights to the property. Is that still in the lease to my knowledge? I'm very instrumental with the Fine Arts Board, guys, so we sit there and stare at that property all the time. Also, in the proposal, you'll see that I noted, you know, I've worked with the Theater Guild. I've worked with the Fine Arts Board as far as their special events coordinator. And, you know, I put in the proposal to where we would commit once a quarter, giving it to a nonprofit for free to hold events. Because there's not that advantageous opportunity for folks, all the venues here wanna charge them to use them and that's just not fair. How do you, when we operate on a budget of $26,000 a year, but then we have to pay $1,000 to raise $1,000? It makes no sense. One other thing I wanted to address on the insurance, was that your question there? As far as the insurance goes, we have gone above and beyond. They requested a million dollars of general liability. We also have our liquor liability and we also understand that we would have to go through the process of ABC permitting, whether it's temporary. But what we would like to actually see done more often is if you know nonprofits can pull those permits without having to go to certain lengths, then they can work in the beer and wine side of it and they can use it as fundraisers to increase their revenues as well. So, you could rotate and have a designated nonprofit that does that. But we have gone above and beyond, got $2 million liability, liquor liability, and the county would also be listed as an additional insured on our certificates of liability. So, that's where I wanted just to address that. My mentor, investor and my dad here, I think he might wanna share something with you just 'cause he is actually gonna be doing a lot of the construction work and the maintenance and updates.
Guys, we really want this property. It would be a huge plus to the county and I think he would see. We've got some big things in store, we just don't wanna announce and commit until we know we have a security commitment from you. Thanks for listening to me.
The only issue, you know, I've heard the issue about the two-year lease and the only problem. Obviously, he is kinda trying to get this business going. We just would like to come from a stance of being what is fair and equitable. If we go in and spend a lot of time, a lot of work, and if you've been on that property, you know it's a lot of work to get this even presentable. You know, you'd hate to get kicked out in two years when you're just probably gonna take us a year to get everything up. I mean, yeah, he can use the kitchen. The kitchen is usable, we can start there. But we would like to be able to get a, you know, some kind of a place where people would be proud to come to and hold their own events. So, the two years is scary to us. If that's what you agree to, yes, you know, we'll accept it because he really needs this property. Three years would be just a compromise so that we at least get our money back and our equity in there. That's the biggest concern that I have about the lease. We're willing to go in and do the hard work, get it up to par. We just don't wanna get kicked out after we get it going. So, you know, three years, I mean, this version, is that, I mean, is that platable to you as opposed to the two-year?
The fair and equitable part is something that I also think about the government subsidizing for-profit businesses that compete against other for-profit businesses. And, you know, don't know that it's fair and equitable to other for-profit businesses for us to do that on a long-term basis.
Well, long-term, you know, we can define long-term in a lot of different ways. You know, you and I had discussed this particular issue and on the way over here, I see how many gas stations there are on each corner. I see how many Family Dollar stores. So, you know, it's not really competing. You know, the length of term, I can, you know, it don't matter to us. It does, only the fact that we're trying to, if we're going and get, the property's been sitting there 10 or 12 years, literally falling apart and nobody's cared about it until now that somebody wants to go in and fix it. That's what's a little, if we wanted to sell it, why didn't we do it 10 years ago, five years ago? So, it's been sitting there for all this period of time. And now, somebody wants to go in and do some work on it and look what we're doing. It's a little unsettling to me that after all this time, now we're having an issue with it.
Commissioner Travis.
Ronnie, I got a question. Where is Help Incorporated gonna be associated with this property with events? And if they do outdoor events next to where Help Incorporated is gonna be, how is that gonna affect those women in that facility? No drinking, no, you're talking about women that have problems?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner Travis. I know.
I think it's gonna be right.
There is a, there is a bit of a buffer between the two areas. Even a little bit in the outdoor space. If they are in the kitchen itself having an event, the buildings are obviously separated by several hundred feet. But I don't, I don't have an answer for that as far as what.
I'm willing to, you know, agree to this lease, but we're gonna have to figure out something about Help Incorporated. You need to talk to Help Incorporated. They might not want alcohol and live music next to a shelter for women.
Well, my experience with Help Incorporated is they pretty much stay inside their building.
This is gonna be the new Family Justice Center.
It's gonna be the new Family Justice Center.
Absolutely, and it's the same sort of operation.
And we've already committed to that.
I don't see a conflict with that. And I'll tell you from my own experience, leasing quite a few properties, what they're talking about is totally reasonable about time. However, we don't have automatic extensions in any of our lease unless there's an increase in the rent. And we actually, we look at our own amortization of what the investor is putting in there. And I was listening to your figures about how much it's gonna save us on maintenance and utilities and so forth. And that needs to be included in, $100 a month is pretty cheap rent. But if it's saving you $3,500 in utility, that's a little different story.
It's $2,400 a year. What's annual utility cost?
If you count the mowing utilities, hood inspection for a year's total is probably roughly $4,000.
$40,000?
Four.
Four.
$4,000, sorry. Yeah, the utilities are roughly about 200 a month. And then I think the fire inspections, maybe another 300. And then whatever our guys have in time in mowing and gas.
Go to three years and put a clause in there that beyond three years would require it to be fair market value negotiated at that time.
There you go, there you go.
Well, that sounds pretty reasonable to me. I'm looking at the Nightcamps to see if I got a head nod, so it's no need of us approving that if they're gonna turn it down.
Well, I definitely want something in there about Help Incorporated. I don't wanna.
Commissioner Travis, as I mentioned earlier, that if they'd hold an event during the weekday, they would have to consult with us, so what we would do is consult with Help Incorporated to make sure there's not a conflict.
Yeah, definitely.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tate, in this lease agreement, does it say that the repairs or changes to the building will be approved by staff?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
What about the Boy Scout Lodge? Because I don't know that I saw any reference in the lease about upfitting or maintenance for the Boy Scout Lodge.
My understanding from talking with Mr. Nightcamp is there would be no outfit. I do not think of the lodge. I think it would just be mowing that area to have a backdrop for outdoor events.
Does it have the maintenance in there as well for those other structures?
I'm looking at that specifically.
It may not be in there.
The arena, right? The outdoor theater area, that's it, right? The stage?
Both areas, the amphitheater and the area. The area in front of the Scout Lodge is a pretty large open area. If it was mowed and maintained, would be suitable for an outdoor.
Yeah, a lot of ticks.
Is that the blue, the area that you've outlined in blue would be included? And what does the areas in pink, what does that designate?
Okay, that was a note, I'm sorry, I should've made that drawing more opaque. But it, basically what it is, is to say that they're not to block that area during business hours with their traffic because the sheriff's garage, our heating and air shop, warden sewer shop are all there. And so, that was what that note was for, was not to block it during normal operating hours.
Well, I thought Mr. Berger had a pretty reasonable suggestion and I noticed Mr. Nightcamp gave a thumbs up. If you were to make that a motion with the caveats that staff would answer some of those questions, particularly Mr. Travis's concern in regards to help, would you be interested in making your suggestion a motion?
Our question, go ahead. Yeah, this is for the attorney. Would this require any change to any existing ordinance to allow alcohol sales on county-owned property? The way, Mr. Perle, the way that I read the lease is that there would still be, I just had my eyes on that language. It would still need to be in compliance with applicable laws, ordinances and regulations affecting the lease premises where it's used, including the town of Wentworth zoning and other ordinances.
But the town can't tell us what to do on our property.
That's exactly right. What does our ordinance say? I'm more concerned about if, just keeping you back in mind, there would have to be an adjustment to an ordinance that the county may have about alcohol on county property.
I do know that the Art Council has served alcohol over there.
Yeah, I don't think we have an ordinance on it.
I'm pretty sure we do. And I just, that's just for information purposes only. Don't let that little caveat, I don't wanna rent them some property and then go over there and hold them accountable for serving alcohol. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Berger, I'm gonna put the birdie or the ball in your court.
I'll make a motion to approve up to three years and add a clause that any extension reached by mutual agreement would, our intent is for that to be at fair market value. But just make sure that it does not have any sort of automatic extension.
All right, without, no extension without due consideration.
Would you also like to add that? Because the current agreement doesn't have it, but you and I discussed about the hours of operation Monday through Friday, that they consult with the county to get approval prior to setting up an event?
Yes, yeah, I took, based on the conversation today, that that was taken care of.
Just wanna make sure that's part of it.
My second motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Berger and a second by Mr. Travis. Would this motion work with the engineers there, Ronnie?
I'm good with it. If the board's happy, I'm fine.
I'm seeing nods and thumbs up. Further discussion? Okay, motion moved and seconded, no further discussion. And move of that, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay.
Okay, gentlemen, I have one more item and it is the approval of recommendation for the general contractor to construct the water line for Gold Hill Road and Washburn Road. With Bill Lester's help, the county did an RFP for this project. We received one, two, three, seven responses back. The low bid was City Plumbing and Pools Incorporated out of Reesville for a bid of $198,025. We would request that the board approve that contract, allow us to move forward with that project. And also, I think in the packet, I included the same language that we had used on other construction projects to allow the county manager to approve change orders up to $50,000.
So, the $198 is the total cost, is that right?
For construction.
For construction. What was the estimate that you had provided us before? Wasn't it over $300,000?
I think so. I think that's right. If you'll bear with me, I can find that hopefully. And Bill may know that off the top of his head.
My concern, I mean, we voted to do this one, but we've got to get closer to numbers. Given the state of the construction business, I would expect cost to be close to or above. Just as Commissioner Hall would definitely know, the cost of construction has been rapidly rising. And we've missed this number by 30 to 40 percent. And so, thankfully, we, as a board, approved this line extension at 300-something thousand. And now, we're at $198. And I see Bill coming up, you got some corrections or?
Well, it begs the question, Commissioner Berger, about now what's the ROI timeframe?
Right, right.
I mean, where do we sit?
A couple of things.
I would a whole lot rather explain this one than the other way.
I agree, but I mean, that's just a large percentage.
So, I think when I probably am before you in previous times, I'll tell you, I am conservative. It's not quite 300 and something. I'm looking for it right now, but where it ended was over 300, which included contingencies at 10 percent, all of the engineering and everything. So, it probably was easily over 250.
I remember about 260.
Actually, I'm looking at it right now. I'm sorry, I'm digging. But knowing that, I think, if you wanna look at those numbers, I'm still off of Ronnie's sheet here. If you go past the low, when you had 232 to 252, that was your second through fourth. That's usually that mid-range. When you ask me to do a cause testament, I play it at mid-range and bump it just a little bit. You know, I look at past projects and that's where I go. So, it's about right on it, to me. We had an extreme low, what we did, because if you look at that one, that's about 10 percent, maybe just 11 percent lower than the next one. So, when it's that way, we do this anyway, but we maybe go a little bit further to quiz the low bidder. Went to that, I talked to the low bidder, the superintendent, and I even asked who would be on the job, just kinda trying to see if everything was okay. I got resounding yeses that everything was okay. Their bid was all right and they were fully ready to proceed. Superintendent called me this morning asking if I thought there would be an award. So, I know they're ready to move forward, but to explain the cost, we have an outlier as far as the low. But if you looked at that mid-range, that 232 to 252 is not far below where the actual construction, before you look at contingency and everything, was on it. And when you're doing those and looking at the ROIs, Ronnie's looking at everything. He's looking at the construction estimate, which hopefully, I will always give you something that's a little conservative. I do not want to be the low bidder. And then I'll have contingencies and engineering and everything added to it, so. I'm kinda glad here, I'll say that City Plumbing has not constructed a project, I think, for the county recently. So, this is a small project. We know they've been interested, we'd like to see the performance and go from there here. But again, at least it was good to hear that they were okay with the numbers and everything. I think we're dealing with something that is low. That would be the one thing I'd point out, but we did kinda investigate and make sure that they were happy.
Yeah, no, we're happy that it's low, but, you know, we made a decision on the ROI and I am curious what the ROI might be projected at now, since it is that much.
I appreciate it.
And I hope the next one is that way, because next one's, you know, gonna be bigger one. We want those to come in a little bit lower, so. And I think whoever mentioned construction business, we're not seeing that on some of the larger stuff. This is line work. Line work, we're still getting some pretty decent numbers, but if we get into the little heavier work, pumps and things like that, that's when we get a little bit more nervous about where the price is gonna go. bit more nervous about where the price is going to go. Or buildings.
Well, I don't think we're trying to be nugatory or in too much detail, or, we're certainly not trying to give you a hard time, but we, you know, we want the facts. It reminds me of my wing commander said that hope is not a strategy. We'd kind of like to have more comfort in the numbers that are thrown out.
Right, right, and, and I remember doing an ROI, you know, contingencies are always in there, at ten percent of whatever the number is, you know, two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, that gets to be a big number, so it's always going to be in there because it's part of, I think, a, a valid estimate. But if the bid hits there or below, that's a ten percent of four hundred thousand, which may be where your next one's headed, that, that's a pretty big number. If you want to consider ROI with, you know, you could possibly look at it, construction only, or construction plus all contingencies and engineering, it could be two different things if you want to look at it.
Further questions?
Not, not of this, I just want to, I know with the next project, we had the money come out of the state water line money, that has a sunset provision. If, we just need to keep an eye on those numbers so that we don't lose some of that.
Did you have a question?
I have a question for Commissioner Berger, for Mr. Chair.
Good deal. Okay.
Just want to make sure the sunset ain't yesterday.
I'm checking first. Further questions, comment? Who would you accept a motion for approval?
I make a motion for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Travis.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Pearl. Further discussion? Here none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Both of you.
Thank you.
One quick thing?
Yes.
Good news. Next month, I hope you'll be, within the next month, you'll get a letter. I was before you, two months ago or so, talking about some of your utilities in the floodplain we were going to take a little bit of a swing at. The State Water Infrastructure Authority Board met last Wednesday and approved one million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollar grant, hundred percent, for Rockingham County to relocate the Hogan's Creek Water Booster. We were not successful on the sewer, but we were in the game. They didn't, I think they funded four projects. They're going to fund more in the fall, and so we're going to take another run at that one to see if we can at least keep a couple of those in it. But, but that first one is one hundred percent grant, and we'll also be able to maybe make some upgrades to it, looking at the future, so.
Oh, we like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business.
As you're fully aware, CARES Act money is coming down from the state to the county. July first, Governor signed session law 2020-80, which allocated the rest of the money to the counties that didn't receive the funds directly from the federal government. So Rockingham County's total funding from the CARES Act grant is three million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand and eighty dollars. Part of that new session law that was signed July first is that twenty-five percent, the counties are to allocate at least twenty-five percent of this to municipalities within the county. So that number for us is eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars that we need to allocate to our municipalities. We're recommending just to base that off of the same allocation method that the local option sales tax is allocated based on population. It's really up to the board, the state is, is not giving any guidance on how to allocate that, so it's up to the board, and this is just our recommendation. So what that would mean, the numbers, I'll run through them right quick, I think you all have a copy of the sheet in front of you. Eden would be three hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred nine. Madison would be fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. Madam would be fifty-five thousand, five hundred and sixteen. Reesville will be three hundred twenty-eight, five hundred and fifty-one. Stonewall will be twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-six. Wentworth would be sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ten. All the guidance and rules or regulations that have come down from the U.S. Treasury and through our North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office all apply, just like they do to the county. The municipalities have to apply to the same rules that, that we do. The North Carolina Office is asking that the county be the, the ones who file the reports for the municipalities, so the reporting would have to come back through the, the county. The, the law for the state has said that the municipalities would be held accountable for the money as well, so the callbacks could go back to the municipalities instead of the county on these. So we're just asking for your approval to allocate it.
If they don't spend it all, it reverts back to the county, and they have to have a plan in place to the state by September the first, which means that they have to have it to us to approve before we submit it to the state.
That's correct. If they don't have a plan to us, they're not eligible, they'll have a test file by September first, they're not eligible. If they don't have a plan that allocates all their money, that can come back to the county, and the county then can decide to, to utilize those funds for other county needs or to reallocate to municipalities if there are other greater needs.
Great question. Mr. Pearl?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And obviously, this is the most logical way to do the disbursement, but I did have one question. Did you, did you check with the municipalities to see what they thought about this dispersment model, or did they have another way? You know, some may not have eligible expenses under that, under the, the plan that's been submitted, or submit a plan with eligible expenses, while maybe another municipality may have more need than allocation. So my question was just, did we check with those folks to see if, if, if they had a, because it's their money, I mean, it's a pot of money, and if they couldn't agree on it, but I mean, I was, I was just wondering, did we check with those folks?
We just used basically the, the sales tax distribution on it, and again, if those municipalities don't, if they're, if, say we have Eden, Reesville, somebody that has a bigger need, they can certainly approach that with the, the county, and then we could come to you guys and ask for additional funds.
Okay. That was my only question, Ms. Chairman.
I think I heard you say that these figures are bigger than they've, what they've already asked for, is that right?
Uh, they haven't asked for anything yet.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry. Further questions? Motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the allocation as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Pearl. Further discussion? Here none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Commissioner comments? Mr. Travis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out. I know during this time it's hard to get out and do things and go to restaurants, but I encourage everyone to experience Rockingham County. We got some great walking trails. Over the weekend, I went to Madison and went tubing at Mad Town Tubing, so please check that out, it's very refreshing and fun, so it breaks the norm of staying at home. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pearl?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, I'd just like to thank Judge Pierce for being here, he was an excellent choice for our Volunteer of the Month. He's a good friend, and he's, he's touched a lot of lives here in Rockingham County, as I stated earlier. He's left quite a footprint in the sand, so to speak, in our community, so we've been very fortunate to have him, and good to see his wife and family here supporting him. Also, my congratulations to Deputy Maggie Barker, Lieutenant Maggie Barker, I should say, upon her retirement, thirty years. Also, her husband, I couldn't help but notice her husband is with her today, so between the two of them, they have sixty years plus in law enforcement. So it truly is a family affair, so I thank Maggie for her service, as well as her husband for his service to the citizens of Rockingham County. And with that being said, Ms. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Berger?
Well, certainly glad to have our invocation back and live with our pastors from the community. Also, reiterate what Commissioner Pearl said, both about Judge Pierce and Maggie Barker. Had the pleasure of working with both of those fine individuals through our court system. Both of them have been instrumental for the things that take place at the courthouse, and certainly appreciate their service to Rockingham County. Also want to make sure folks are aware, our school system and also Bethany Charter have resumed, I guess you can say, summer or off-season sport workouts. That will start back up as soon as tomorrow, so glad that the kids are, are able to get back around one another a little bit with precautions and hopefully prepare for a sports season. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate everyone who attended tonight. Again, it's good to see folks able to be in the room again, it just makes it a different experience for us. Echoing some other comments that have already been made, I appreciate the Pierce family for being here. As Reece said, you know, Judge Pierce has been a great friend, I had the honor of serving with him on the Salvation Army Board, and got to experience some of his leadership and thoughts. And of course, Ms. Pierce was my math teacher in high school years ago, so she's a lifelong educator, and I always appreciate seeing former teachers. So I appreciate Commissioner Mike Causey for being here tonight, his comments, appreciate Sheriff Sam Page and his staff, and especially Lieutenant Barker as well. Appreciate Wayne Delancey and the other officials from the Office of the State Fire Marshal who were in attendance tonight. Thank you, everyone, for being here, we appreciate you coming to Rockingham County. And also, I'd like to mention real quickly, Reverend Hardison was here, and he didn't mention this, but, but I will, his church experienced a fire just within the last forty-eight hours, and they've got extensive smoke damage, luckily, it's not a lot of the building was damaged. He lost a lot of books, a lot of valuable writings that were in his office, and so please, just keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they're experiencing this loss of, at their church. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Well, good, because we have a redirect.
I'm sorry, I think we need to just say happy birthday to Roy, thank you for everything you did.
Yeah, I echo all the positive comments, and congratulations to Maggie Barker and Judge Pierce. As I mentioned before, Commissioner Pearl and I have worked closely with Judge Pierce and the Health and Human Services, and that's not always a very fun job, and sometimes fairly lengthy night meetings there, but Judge Pierce has done more than his share to help all, all the citizens. I want to compliment the commissioners here, and I'll miss a lot, but Representative, Commissioner, excuse me, Pearl, Commissioner Pearl has represented us at the state level here with these opioids, we have an ongoing lawsuit, plus in the general concerns that this county has with dealing with the, the drug problem, and he's taken the time and done the research and made very valid comments to us, and also his expertise in the law enforcement field has been useful. Mr. Berger has been notable in helping us with several legal issues to deal with, and kept up with some details, and there's some detailed problems going on right now as we establish priorities and policies with construction. And speaking of construction, Commissioner Hall knows the details of that, and that's been very helpful as we've gone through several problems. And Commissioner Travis, he hasn't fixed any phones for us, but he stayed on top of several things that are important issues, and we're going to address some of those a bit later tonight. I want to mention a couple things about the weather. If you haven't figured it out, it's hot out there, and we have some senior citizens that need some watching, especially with the other issues about reducing social contact, but we need to keep up with our older folks as a matter of safety to avoid heat prostration, these various other heat-induced issues. And in line with that, I'm making a general announcement that until, until further notice, we're going to cancel the commissioners' meetings on the road in light of the extra demands it puts on the various fire departments and other public facilities, plus our own staff. And so we intend to do the rest of our commissioner meetings for the year in this facility, at least that's what we plan for now. Gentlemen, we have need of a closed session, I think you're aware of it. Do we have a motion concerning this?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, go into closed session, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, that point one ten A1, approval of closed session minutes, and A5 instruct negotiating agents. I don't think we need to add anything to that, do we, Mr. Attorney? Is that everything?
That is correct.
So that's my motion.
All right. Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further comment or discussion? And I'll mention before we take the vote on this that I don't expect any sort of public vote to be required afterward. Therefore, unless you just like the facility and want to hang around outside, because we'll conduct a closed session in this room here. Here none, further comment, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. We will move to closed session in the next few minutes.